Vision Zero update. Scott, Lynn?
Yes, I was going to introduce Wen Dang, as you all know, as well as Tara Applebaum, who's our contractor, is here today. And I just wanted to congratulate both of them because our Vision Zero program is really starting to garner state and national recognition. And we've got some good statistical results that we think you'll be excited about. As part of this program, I also wanted to go over, at a commission meeting, I committed in December to come back to you all with a recommendation for how we think the program should be structured in the future. We are creating a part-time job description, 30-hour-per-week job description. We think that is the smart way to go on this. So we'll be back to you all with a recommendation on that, as well as a transition plan to get to bring that in-house. So that's another thing. And then finally, when they're finished, I'd like to give an update on Australian, because I know that is an issue that's on everyone's mind. And it's an example from Vision Zero. I think it's a great example of what we could do to design, in a smart way, the new road improvements that the county is undertaking on that particular road in order to incorporate Vision Zero principles. So, thank you. Wen?
Hi, good morning. I do want to reiterate that Vision Zero is a strategy to eliminate all traffic crashes and fatalities within our roadway network. And with that, you know, we had an amazing, last weekend, we had an amazing event that Tara helped organize. We gave out hundreds of free helmets and with lots of participation from our community. And it's really exciting, every time I work one of these events, to see how people are so excited to really just get to know what is our goal and why are we doing this. So I do want to recap that we are officially part of the Vision Zero Network officially, one of four cities in the state of Florida. And with that, our task force is probably the largest out of the state of Florida in general, with over 50 members, with Mayor James as leading this effort. This past year, 2019, we really focused on employee education. And I have to credit our risk department in giving employee orientation by reiterating the fact that we have to focus on safety internally first, as we are communing to the external stakeholders. We held over 40 events in 2019. It's really exciting. This is an event right here at the intersection of, at the fire station three up in North Broadway. It was really exciting, because it's one of the first events I participated with zero parking issues, because this is a walkable community and they came. And we gave out over 500 helmets that day also. With that, you know, Tara's been really focused on education, and especially high school, and particular high school students, because this is the most vulnerable group. As we know that our data, between 15 to 19, these are the kids that is commonly hurt within our roadway network. Of course, we can't forget Get 880s. We focus our senior drivers as we want to outreach to them. You know, your mobility are not limited, and this is how we can be safe within our roadway network. Last year, we received $48,000 in the High Visibility Enforcement Grant that focused more on our target corridors. Our target corridors are Okeechobee West, 45th Street, and of course, North Broadway. These are the three sections of roadway in the city of West Palm Beach that is most dangerous for pedestrian bicyclists. And there are going to be some results at the end of this presentation on how we are able to accomplish that. We are pursuing additional grant this year. We're expecting a similar amount as we are targeting our grants. So this year, we're really focused on speed management. And with speed management is, we know that that's the focus of, you know, providing safety. You know, I've initiated a conversation with the fire department, and we're going to do a pilot study on how will speed humps really give us a safe network? And in addition, still maintain the level of service as we are providing to our community with data. So a couple of examples that we've done this past year, you know, this is South Olive itself. It borders the South Olive Elementary School. It's a quick build. When we think of quick build, staff design internally, and we look at providing a safe network as far as providing crosswalks, so people can cross to go to the school. But the most exciting part of it is that after we finish construction, we get to measure and we see that there is a speed reduction already. Another project that we did last year, and we were able to measure, and this is probably the most exciting piece of it, because this is one of the most important intersections that I think we've done in the city. This is a Dutch style protected roundabout intersection. It's probably the first one that was done in the state of Florida. But we saw that the 85th percentile, the speed reduction, is incredible at this location. And of course, we get to test our zikla separators along with AIPP as making this a focal point of the villages itself. You know, we have been working with developers. Every time they come in and build a project, we look at, how can we provide safe facilities? This project is, actually, this is Okeechobee. This is the first protected bike lanes on a state highway system within our downtown area. We target Okeechobee because this is the highest crash corridor in our downtown, and 25% of all crashes in downtown is actually on Okeechobee itself. So this is really exciting, because this is going to get featured in at the Safe Streets Summit, and we're excited for that. So this past year, and this is probably a conversation that we had several years, like Okeechobee and Rosemary being so dark, well, we finished the project, and here it is. It's, thank you. It was a challenging project, but we were able to complete it, you know. And then, of course, you know, this is, we focus more on school and providing safe routes to school. We participated in Walk to School Day and look at, how do we upgrade all 31 of our school zones within the city? We've had five completed already and another eight under contract. Everything has been designed. We're only focused on construction this year. And with, you know, our pedestrian program, because it's also very important, and as we're talking about, how do we connect people into these, our schools and our community services? 41st Street is a very good example, because at the end of the street is the Boys and Girls Club. As you can see, there's no sidewalk on the other side of the road. And we're looking at, how do we provide connected lengths of sidewalks and really provide a safe program for speed management on this street? So last year, we spent quite a bit of money on PR and marketing, and I think that's part of our success, is communication. And with this program, we had reached over 3.4 million people, based on the numbers that our consultants has provided for us. And, excuse me, and with that investment, I think there's part of, it is part of our success, because our West Palm Beach Police Department has released results at the end of 2019. And I'm very excited to say that we are down. As if you look at these numbers, the fatal crashes have gone down by two, which gives us a 33% net. But we still have, even though our numbers are down, I want to focus on the ped bike crashes, because these are the most vulnerable user of our roadway network. So we're going to continue to get that number to zero, and that is the goal of Vision Zero itself. The other numbers that we received is actually from the healthcare district. And also, those numbers are of severity of people who are in these crashes that gets transferred to St. Mary's Hospital. And their numbers have also, there is also a decline. But again, put focus on the motor vehicle versus pedestrian number. Even though we're down from 39 to 32, it's still 32 that is where in this situation. So for 2020, and this is an exciting project for me personally, because I saw this as an inspiration image last year, and I say, how awesome is this? It's a little park for little kids to learn about road signs, road safeties, before, you know, you take your driver's ed, driver's education classes when you're a teenager. So how great would it be to introduce children, elementary schools' children, to this type of facilities? So I got so excited, I actually personally visit Copenhagen itself and visit a park and, you know, really sit there and enjoy how, you know, these kids traverse through this course itself. So we looked at a location, and this really, this project evolved within the past two weeks, just to let everybody know, because we presented at the Palm Beach TPA, and, you know, the school board was so excited that we developed this. So ultimately, Palmetto Elementary School in the south area, we do have a project that the Palm Beach TPA awarders on Parker Avenue. And as we're developing that, we saw that the school at this location is separated by an intersection, and here are some opportunities for us to improve safety at that location. And so I just wanted to show you guys that this is an image of the elementary school and that intersection. We had met with the neighborhood already, as far as concept on Parker Avenue with our grant project. And we are looking at a, you know, updating this intersection, along with providing a multi-use path, some kind of access to and from the school itself. But when we were in discussion with the school district, they have offered for us to dream big and make something exciting out of that park, that image that I showed you earlier, within school property. I just met with the COO and the school board on Thursday of last week and presented them with this concept. And it's just really exciting, because this has never been done before. And, you know, one of the things that I asked for, can we program this and bring in other students and really develop an education program with the school itself? As this is, you know, we're trying to provide road safety. They're very exciting. They're fully on board. And so then, you know, this is an opportunity to really get a reaction for everybody in this group. The other thing that was asked of me is, dream big. But, you know, I'm an engineer, I dream realistic, but I also dream big. And what if it can be turned into something, you know, more flourish with signalized intersections and roundabouts and one-way streets and, you know, crosswalks? These are things that's within the city. These are all the city streets, but on a smaller network. And with that, it's really a vision for me personally for 2020, and see how can we develop this vision into something that's really important to the community.
Wen, how is this being funded?
This project right now is not funded. We do have a little bit of safety dollars that we're using. Up to this point, all the efforts that's been made is from city staff, and, you know, we're designing this. We're thinking that, if we're thinking realistic, you know, we're, and of course, if we're thinking realistic, this project is not going to exceed $500,000. That's, you know, from our estimates. We are, the next thing that we would do is really apply for grants with the Palm Beach TPA, because we, I did present this at the Palm Beach TPA. The other thing is, I've asked, you know, boldly asked the school district to participate with us. And then, I think, during a conversation I had with FPNL, because, you know, last week on Friday, I showed them this concept, and maybe that's an opportunity for us to pursue. Right now, it's not a capital project, it's only in planning. And as we like the concept and we want to develop it further, it will be in the next year capital plan.
Okay, very good. I like the dream big aspect of it. Any questions? Commissioner Schoeffen and Madam President.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I think it's definitely a good thing to get our young people thinking early about, you know, our roadways and safety, et cetera. I like the idea of this park, and I hope that there's something successful, that maybe we can locate some things like this along some of the corridors that we're focused on, like the Broadway corridor or 45th Street, to be in those same neighborhoods that we're focusing on. I understand this is just down from the Okeechobee corridor that we're working on as well. Hopefully, there's some successes here, and we can duplicate those efforts along the same Vision Zero corridors as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I, you know, when I first looked at this, I was thinking of, let's see, we can co-locate it in some of our existing park features already. You know, with, this was just a perfect opportunity, and I think it can be easily replicated if we're interested.
Great. Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Wen. Appreciate the presentation. And, you know, this reminds me, the focus on young kids and educating students, I love the high school students as well as our seniors as well, but this reminds me of, when I was in grade school, I remember the, you know, they're really trying to educate young people on, even before we were driving, about the disasters of drinking and driving. And I'll never forget, my mom had a can of Diet Coke, and she was drinking that, and I freaked out on her, and I said, "Mom, you're not supposed to drink and drive," because I didn't quite fully understand that soda was okay, well, to drink and drive. But what I'm trying to say here is that even though it might be a decade before some of these students might be driving, I think that they are advocates to their parents, and I think that that's really important. I'm curious if we do any outreach to Uber or Lyft drivers. You know, whenever I do ask for an Uber or a Lyft, I have to say that those are some of the scariest times that I am in a vehicle, and I'm constantly asking them to slow down. And so I don't know if we have statistics on if some of the crashes, you know, are because we have people who maybe aren't, you know, familiar with our streets, driving on our streets, so that's one area. The other thing I have noticed lately from attending TPA workshops, and I noticed in your presentation, that you're using the term crash versus accident. And I am very keenly aware of the difference of that now, and I'm wondering if you could just take a moment to talk about the difference in those two terms.
Sure, absolutely. Crashes are preventable. And they're preventable with good road design. And I think that's one of the terms that I've trained myself to always focus on, that when there's an accident on the road, and we call it an accident, so there's nobody to blame but ourselves, right? But when we talk about traffic crashes, we can make that change, and we can, one, you know, with the three E's, educate, like enforcement, and really, the most important piece of it, is engineer a better and safer road. And so that's why, it's a simple and quick answer, is crashes are preventable.
Right. So oftentimes, we say accident, just because that's our typical term, but in fact, it's a crash, because it was something that was preventable, someone rolling through a stop sign, not stopping, and have hit someone. My last point in question is about the focus areas. I attend a lot of neighborhood association meetings, and they're constantly saying, well, whatever issue they might be bringing up, they're using the Vision Zero methodology as an example to say, well, we should have better lighting or better traffic calming to address speeding issues. And doesn't this represent what Vision Zero is all about? So I noticed that you mentioned the three areas that are our focus areas. Will that be expanding, or how are we, you know, relating this to the rest of the city? And is there representation on that task force from each of our neighborhood associations?
So the focus, the focus area is the data that the police department released to us. These are the area with the highest crashes. And so it becomes a number. The highest doesn't, even though we have side streets that are cut-through streets, they're still as important to, you know, our entire network. One of the things that we really focus on, as far as for engineering, is really our census data, you know, kind of sidelined into that, is it's very important, because we know that low walkable area are generally low-income area, and that is one of our focus area. The other thing that we look at is our primarily, our primary collector roads. These are Parker, Lake Avenue, Olive, you know, these are the primary spine of our roadway network that we connect people. And typically, we see that those are speeding, there's a lot of speeding on those roads. So we try to tackle those first, and then we also look at our school and our community services. Our school, I'll give you a good example, is Coniston Middle School has, doesn't have a lot of school buses, for good reasons, because the majority of the kids that goes there walk and bike to school. So we focus right now on speed management. And that is a strategy that has proven effective, as you can see with some of our results, and that's what, and that's where, that's how we focus, as far as which neighborhood to tackle first.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Commissioner Schoeffen.
Thank you, and forgive me if I'm jumping ahead here, because I know you're going to do an Australian update too, and not having the data in front of me. What you've described is a lot of what happens on Australian as well. We have excessive speeding, we've had a lot of crashes, even crashes into homes. There's, you know, a middle school there, so a lot of walkable neighborhoods too. Just curious, in the data and statistics, is there room, I guess this would be my lobbying effort, to include Australian in our Vision Zero policy, in that it qualifies under the same kind of statistics that you've already outlined? So is there a reason because of ownership of roads, or is there something else that I'm not aware of?
Yeah, it's not ownership of roads. We treat every project that comes into us as important as, you know, any of these high areas. Australian, which Scott's going to talk about next, as you can see that it is owned by the county, they are going through a major design effort. It's part of our responsibility to provide a safer design speed for that road. And what that means is shorter site distance, or shorter stopping site distance with the curves along the road. In addition to that, is there's got to be a lot of crosswalks along Australian. And, you know, it's, these are some of the efforts that we're making comments on the county plan to ensure that there's safety. But I think one thing that, if there's a takeaway, the most important thing is, what is the design speed that we're targeting for? So we're designing for 30 miles per hour, there are certain parameters as engineers that they're forced to do, right? Tighter horizontal curves, like site distance are shorter, median width are smaller. These are all the elements that comes into an engineering design that will provide a safe, a safer, you know, a network. And Scott's going to talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Wen? Again, thank you, very fine presentation. And Scott, what can you tell us about Australian?
Yes, before I get started, you know, I just realized I failed to mention two important constituents here that I need to thank. Number one is our Internal and Communications Department, because they've done an outstanding job, but also the police as well, too. So both of them, internal, and I don't have time to mention all the external stakeholders, Wen showed a lot of them. But in regard to Australian, because I think this is a perfect example of how we can work to make our streets safer. So I'm not going to go into all the history of Australian, but five years ago, we worked with the county to try to come up with a safer cross-section. When the bond referendum went out, the penny sales tax, excuse me, referendum went out, we met with the county, representing a number of citizens who were very active. Ms. Harrison is a perfect example of really working with us to try to make sure that we get the right outcomes on this road. So anyway, we worked with the citizens, and we met with the county, and the county agreed to take a look at what cross-section they're proposing to provide as part of the penny sales tax. And that was basically bike lanes, and not really changing the sidewalks along there, but putting bike lanes on the road, which would be just striped, bike lanes as part of the lane of traffic. And we know that, just from design standards, that that really is probably not the safest way for people to be able to utilize bicycles along that corridor. So we met with them, and the county was receptive, which we're very thankful for. You know, we've worked with them extensively. So they came up with a different cross-section. They actually hired a consulting firm in order to make that roadway safer. And also, incidentally, you know, we have some very bright people that live along there that understand, how do you make a road safe? So we have a real active constituency along there. So we asked the county to do separate bike lanes, and if necessary, because of a lack of space, that you could do a combined pathway with a bicycle track, as well as a sidewalk combined. And they ended up agreeing to do that, okay, so the county. So we're really thankful for that. However, now that we're involved with Vision Zero, we've asked them to even take a step further. So we're in active discussions with them, and we're hoping that we can end up convincing them to take the next step. And I'm going to pass this out, so you'll see our ask of them, and so you'll have this as something to take back, take with you. But what we're asking for them to do is be able to create a buffer area where you can plant trees along Australian. And this would provide shade for pedestrians and bicyclists, but also, even more importantly, will provide a barrier for them with, from the act of traffic. And so we really feel like this is really, really important to do that. So we're asking them to slightly reconfigure their cross-section to be able to achieve that. We really feel it's important. We also know that if you do that, that it actually creates friction. So people will slow down, because if there's trees along the edge of the roadway, that they'll actually slow down. So it'll accomplish two purposes. So we're hoping, we're asking for a meeting. Their initial reaction was, well, we don't really want to change what we've already designed, but we're asked for another meeting to sit down with them, to go further and explain our position further. So hopefully, we'll be able to reach an agreement on that. And we're just really excited, and we do appreciate the county working with us. It's just really important for safety for them to be able to work with us on this, and for the good of the neighborhood, so.
So Scott, you sent this letter in September
Yes.
of last year. We haven't received a response?
Yes, we got a response, where they said that they were uncomfortable making changes to the design because of some of the standards that they had, longstanding standards that they had. So we asked them for another meeting, Mayor, because their, their standards, I believe, now with DOT has made some changes to the standards throughout the state, and that their standards could be modified to meet the new DOT standards. And so we would be able to achieve what we asked for within DOT guidelines. And so, you know, that's kind of the overall standard that most municipalities and county governments utilize. So we want to be able to meet with them one more time, if possible, and try to see if we could end up creating space to be able to plant trees along there, which, again, would buffer, and not just that, but we also would like to expand the multi-use pathway from 10 feet to 12 feet wide, so that we would have, make sure we have clearance between pedestrians and bicyclists that would be sharing the pathway.
All right, so have they agreed to another meeting, or we
Yes, yes. Kevin met with them last week. We asked to be able to set a meeting.
Okay.
So I think I'm going to try to initiate that meeting. It was really unclear at this point who would initiate the meeting. I would like to, you know, I'm going to take the initiative and see if we can't get with them. I think this is really important, that, you know, this is something we learned through Vision Zero, that this is, you know, we can be successful with this, to slow down traffic and protect pedestrians and bicyclists.
All right. Ms. Johnson, if you could put that on our list, when we have our periodic meetings with the county.
Yes.
Just as follow-up, please.
Sure, well.
Any other questions for, yeah, Commissioner Schoeffen?
Thank you, thank you, Scott, and thank you to Mayor for putting that on the priority list. I think this E, engineering, is really important in the long run. I guess I would just ask, too, that as we're working on the engineering, if we could make sure we focus on the enforcement piece to try to keep things safe there in the meantime. I want to, again, really highlight, thank you to staff for working with the county, working with the neighborhoods, and then we have some really active and engaged neighborhoods along there. And, you know, I'm hopeful that this will be a good step forward into making it a much safer corridor. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schoeffen, for that. I'm sure I've gotten the same emails that you all have been getting, and I have emphasized to our police that we try to beef up enforcement, speed enforcement, along that corridor, and some others in the city, but certainly on Australian. Commissioner Riles?
Thank you, Chief Mayor. I just have one question. Has anyone put any consideration, I hear that you're talking about putting in trees, but has anyone made any, or done any study to determine whether or not the trees would affect the historic flooding on Australian?
Well, and that's a separate issue. Of course, it goes without saying, when this project was originally conceived as part of the penny sales tax, one of the commitments the county made, which, again, we really appreciate, is that they would fix the drainage as they're redoing the street. That's critical. The first phase of that, unfortunately, has been delayed, which is at Palm Beach Lakes in Australian, because they ran into some contaminated soil there. However, there are two other sections that flood However, there are two other sections that flood regularly along that corridor. So we need to make sure they're, they're, they're going to fix that. And, and they've indicated to us that they will fix the drainage as they're actually doing the redo of the street. So, and we do appreciate the counties. I, I mean, I don't want to underestimate the fact that they are really, have stepped up in that regard. So there's really just minor differences now between, between the county and the city in regard to this rebuild of this road, so.
Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation on this. This is something we've heard a lot about, so appreciate it being moved forward. My question was about the transparency of where we are on this project. This is, is this included on the CIP project list on our website?
No, it's not because it's a county project. However, city will be participating at some point because we have agreed to provide the lighting upgrades along this corridor. We really think that the county should provide the trees because ultimately, this new cross-section is less expensive than what was originally being, was provided in the penny sales tax project. However, you know, that's always negotiable in regard to the trees as well. So at some point, we're going to have to fund, once it's arrived at, you know, the, the upgrade to the lighting and perhaps some landscaping participation. So we don't have it currently on there because it's really not, not our project, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Again, thank you both, Scott and Lynn, for very fine presentations and keep us posted.